And I asked, do you adhere to it? Do you analyze whether it serves the purpose of improvement in goal orientation and setting a positive tone for the working relationship? And does it restrict communication of issues? Sometimes the evaluation becomes so focused, you don't talk about the issues that may be causing concern, concern by both parties. And as a facilitator, I've been involved in facilitating a superintendent evaluation to help the Board of Education that has different viewpoints about what a superintendent is supposed to be doing to come together to a consensus. Because it's really difficult when you deal with the superintendent evaluation. And in the superintendent evaluation, you'll get a comment that's written that says, "The superintendent provides more than enough information for us to make a decision." And then there's another comment, three comments down on the same point, that says, "We don't get enough information." Now, that sends a mixed direction. And the comment that came back at one time was, "Well, you should be able to decipher that and know what to do." Well, if you read between the lines of what that comment means, it means that somebody thinks they have more power on the board than the other person that made the other comment, because you should know what to do. Well, if you all are individually respected, you all individually have an ability to express an opinion, then you've got to come together to express a majority position, because that's what carries the weight with the leadership staff, not the individual comment. Evaluation needs to have timeline. You need time for development, data collection, consensus development, written document, feedback, goal development, and contractual and statutory obligations. This amount forward because we have revenue controls to say that we need to establish a plan to present a budget that provides education for students and meets the statutory obligations that are before. Are we ready to move forward? Okay. Okay, let's talk about the development. I talked about the concept of our development to the evaluation. If you want to change the evaluation process, there are times when you should do that. You either just started at a new cycle, or you decide that you're going to change it in mid-cycle, but you don't all of a sudden change the process as you're going to the final bottom. The data collection. There's a big thing, some people like to get feedback from multiple sources on evaluation. You better talk about the reliability of the data, what instruction exists for people to collect it. And we understand that you have a responsibility as a board to deal with it. Now, consensus development, talked about the majority of the board, should be sending something with a majority. Four of your votes should be in that direction. And the superintendent's evaluation is the only evaluation by law that is a public record by the educator effectiveness that was changed for all the rest of the administrative staff. So the superintendent's is the only evaluation that's released. And I have to tell you that the written document, the final consensus written document. Now, that doesn't mean draft documents can't be requested, so I'm going to talk to you about how you develop that and deal with that issue. And then how you provide feedback to the superintendent, feedback from the superintendent back to the board, and then how goals are developed, and the timeline for contract renewal, if there's compensation incentives built in, how they're addressed, and how you would deal with it if determined that philosophically you've reached a point where there was a difference. The local framework issues. There should be a board policy that deals with evaluation, which you do have, should indicate either there will indicate how many times a year it needs to be done, or if it's less. You'll deal with a job description, the orientation of the job description, leadership versus management, and it's kind of critical. Difference, superintendent will hold administrative staff meetings at least once a month. Will attend common council meetings. Those are managerial. If it's leadership, superintendent will gather input from leadership staff on issues of importance and critical to the nature of the school district. Doesn't say how often you're going to meet, it's going to say information's going to be gathered. It's going to present himself in the local political environment as needed to represent the schools. You need to understand that. Leadership standards in the state of Wisconsin, I don't have, and I apologize for this, I didn't know how many people were coming. Here are the seven leadership standards, so I do have enough for board members. Pass those around. The first one is the administrator has an understanding, demonstrates competence in the ten teacher standards. So what normally needs to occur is, the first thing that people ask is, "What are the ten teacher standards?" So there are the ten teacher standards. The administrator leads by facilitating the development, articulation, implementation, and stewardship of a vision of learning that is shared by the school community. That's the second administrative standard. The third is, the administrator manages by advocating, nurturing, and sustaining the school culture and instructional program conducive to pupil learning and staff professional growth. Administrator, the fourth is, the administrator ensures management of the organization, operations, finances, and resources for a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment. The fifth is, administrator models collaborating with families and community members, responding to diverse community interests and needs, and mobilizing community resources. The sixth is, the administrator acts with integrity, fairness, and an ethical manner. And the seventh, the administrator understands, responds to, interacts with the larger political, social, economic, legal, and cultural context that affects schooling. You'll note that the state of Wisconsin has seven leadership standards. Two through seven are the same as the interstate school leadership consortium standards throughout the United States. We added in the state of Wisconsin that you have to know ten teaching standards, because there's a requirement, at least unless it's asked to be waived, there's a requirement that you're supposed to have had some teaching experience before becoming an administrator. I'll tell you that most district administrators' superintendent evaluations do not evaluate the first one, because the person's not serving the role as a teacher, but it's identified as one of those. Timeline to complete evaluation. You have to decide if it's continuous improvement, formal versus informal, and contract renewal. If it's continuous improvement, you can't say you can do continuous improvement once a year, but you can only do continuous improvement once a year if you have total alignment of your school. And it's obvious that there is some alignment issues with expectations, so you need to do things a little more inform, more often. Wherever you get that accomplished is informal versus formal. I'll speak to it right now, but I'll reinforce it. I didn't care for this, but it was the best thing that could be done, and that's how we did it when I operated as a superintendent, was four times a year. Was it informal in the first quarter, it was semi-formal second quarter, third quarter it was informal, and the fourth quarter was the final. And the quarters started March, April. Now, what was the advantages to that? One of the things that frustrates administrators and new board members is sometimes there'll be an issue that'll come up in a school board election, that'll be a decision that we need that the administrator is really not the appropriate person, and we need to have change. But there's been no dialogue to find out from the new board member with the rest of the board as to whether the position that's being carried out is a position from the majority of the board. And if the position's of the majority of the board, then there has to be an alignment of the new person with the rest of the board, or you have to have some discussions as to where your middle ground is. And that's an issue that we spend a lot of time talking about, because I will tell you that in continuous improvement, you deal with improvement. Continuous change in leadership, if you read the research, it's three to five years to get anything successfully implemented and accomplished in a school district. And that if you do it any quicker than that, you'll have staff in a situation of asking a question, "Do we really have to do this, or is the leader going to change before it's really going to be implemented?" And staff members are going to answer that question, because any change affects them and the way they're dealing with the education of children. So this is a domino effect. And then the confidentiality during the evaluation. Let me try and raise that, not that this would occur in your school district, but it was challenged as to whether you could circulate a document, turn in your informal evaluations, have one board member record it, and then come to a meeting to talk about it. The draft documents, if you conservatively look at the law with respect to a public record, is, once a document is shared, a draft document with another person, it's no longer considered a draft. Moakie Area Technical College, they did that. And the informal evaluations, even though they hadn't been discussed, were requested by the Moakie General Sentinel, so each board member's ranking of the superintendent, I shouldn't say superintendent, the executive director of Moakie Area Technical College was on public display, they hadn't talked about her, so the board's pool got into an embarrassing situation, because they weren't in alignment, and they no longer had the opportunity to provide the influence, because all of a sudden, the public generated where it was going and as to whether the board members were effective. And so when I talked earlier at the beginning of the meeting, open meetings law changes how you operate as a board of education. It's not the same as a business, and it's very difficult. That was my soapbox comment, but I want you to be aware of that, because one of the things that board members always ask me is, "How do we deal with that?" Wisconsin statute 1985-1C is the exemption under the, for the open meetings law, to allow you to go in a closed session and talk about superintendent or employee evaluation. 11824-1 is the statute that indicates that the school board can employ the district administrator. 11824-2A through 2F talk about the roles or expectations. 11824-6 and 7 talk about the contract renewal provisions. Wisconsin statutes chapter PI-8 and PI-34. PI-8.01-2Q, personal evaluation, 1 and 2, and PI-34.03 indicate where the administrative standards are listed. 8.02-2Q, each school board shall establish specific criteria and systematic procedures to measure the performance of licensed school personnel. The written evaluation shall be based on a board adopted job description, including job-related activities, and shall include observation of the individual's performance as part of the evaluation data. Evaluation of licensed school personnel shall occur during the first year of employment and at least every third year after. And it's important that you deal with the concept that you're supposed to tie it to the job description, you're supposed to deal with job-related activities, and observe. And PI-8.01-2, the school board shall ensure the evaluation is included goals for purposes of discipline, job retention, and promotion, shall be performed by persons who have the training, knowledge, and skills necessary to evaluate the professional school personnel. And I've added the emphasis, the school district board shall be responsible for the evaluation of the school district administrator under this definition. So the importance and emphasis on the last one and this one, there is no underlying in this section, but the importance to this one is, school districts sometimes like to employ a 360-degree feedback instrument. You have the responsibility to evaluate and determine whether that is accurate, reliable, and should be included. Now, that doesn't mean you can't ask for feedback and use part of the, yes?
What was that document you just?
360-degree feedback. 360-degree feedback would be the idea that you would pass out a survey, and they're not maybe related to the school district? And you might ask, under some of these evaluations, you may ask some comments, is the person visible in the schools, can you talk to the person? And so some people do have that, but my issue, and this is not a soapbox, goes back to the concept of, you'll be responsible, you have to make sure you've provided enough education and emphasis so that the person can actually provide some reasonable feedback. And now, this is something I'd like to point out, and I want you to think about this, because this is the research. A lot of people like to use Likert scales. And you know what the Likert scale is? Somebody is meeting expectations, exceeds expectations, or needs improvement. Well, let me give you an example. When most people talk about that, and when they get the information, you're comparing it against the prior person or the prior performance. Now, remember I, when we were changing the tape, I was talking about the idea of how sometimes you hire somebody with some skills, and all of a sudden, the expectations of the district or the issues change. Well, if you set a standard, and the first year, if somebody comes new into a school district, and you've replaced your administrator, you use a new administrator, and you say the prior administrator didn't provide enough background information to the board of education. So the new administrator comes in, and your board packets become luminous, articulate, and they have all the information. So the first year, you say exceeds the expectations. In the second year, most people are going to say, if they didn't see the prior person, he meets the expectations, or she meets the expectations. And that's what happens to a Likert scale. It's the principle of a regression to the mean. And as a math teacher, I get to use that term occasionally, but that's really what it is, you regress to the mean. Yes?
You call it, what kind of scale did you call it?
Likert.
So I C-H-E-R-T-A.
Okay. L-I-K?
Yeah.
V-A. That's why I didn't. Now, basic twenty questions. How much time do you need as an individual school board member to make a decision? I talked about this earlier, it becomes very critical here. If you're expecting a board to come to a meeting to discuss a superintendent evaluation, and a board needs, a board member needs two weeks to make a decision because of their work schedule, other issues, and going through information, it doesn't help to send out the evaluation form on five days before the board meeting if they need two weeks. Okay? What information do you need to make a decision? And there are going to be questions that you don't know, it's okay to say you don't know, maybe you haven't had time to evaluate. What are you looking for as an outcome of the district administrator superintendent schools evaluation process? That is very critical. Remember, we kept saying, what are you expecting? We talked about it in communication. My best example of this is engagement with the public by the board. Okay? If the board of education has an agenda, and they allow public input at the beginning of the meeting, and it has to be on an agenda item, and then at the end of the meeting, they have public input that can be on any issue, if the board changes that, all of a sudden, you've let somebody down, you haven't communicated your expectation. If at some board meetings, you decide to allow public input on the agenda, when the agenda item is being talked about before the board talks about it, or the board talks about it, and then you're going to let some input in, and then you're gone, you haven't posted it that way, you've changed that, you haven't set up a trust factor with your community. That's really what happens when you start saying, and you have to get an alignment back to the other issues. And the last is, how will you address trust roles and responsibility in the evaluation process? That goes back to, remember when I talked about the roles, what the role of the board was, what the role is of administration? Remember when I talked about the idea, I have to outline your job description? If your job description is written, so it's managerial, and you're looking for leadership, how can you hold somebody responsible for not giving you leadership if you really only said you wanted management? It's, now, why is that important? It's not just important for the superintendent, district administrator, when they work with the board over a period of years, it's important when the board members change, because the new board member is reading that, saying, "This is what we're expecting," and yet, that's not what the rest of the board is expecting, because there hasn't been an articulation. That's the alignment, that's the discussion. Leadership standards. Identify key attributes, board policy, job descriptions, role, the school board will provide a direction, data sources, collection, and key work with school boards. What I'd like to do now is, I'd like to talk just about, oh, my computer wants to stop page. Who's responsible for the data? Does the data reflect areas in the job description? Is the data of primary importance, judging the quality of the individual's performance, performance schools, and document review? Now, what I'd like to do, is I'd like to pass out, what might be helpful, if you're having any kind of difficulty, and it doesn't have to be in this format, but it is, I put it in this format, this is the process, we have been presenting at sessions for school board members, we have talked to the executive director of the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, and we believe this is a document that provides an opportunity for, how would I say, feedback in formal and informal fashion. Now, if you were a district, and you had a cycle, and you had more than one evaluation, what you would do is, at the beginning of the year, you would give the board a completed evaluation document with the information, not where they do the quarterly period, but the evaluation. What happens is, you'll see, let's explain the spreadsheet here. The standard key indicator and attribute is in A column. B column is the first quarter. C column is the second quarter. Third quarter is D, and the last, January, months of October, November, December, is written. Informal, column B, column D. You do a semi-formal, that would be the second quarter, and the last quarter is the written. Now, the rating scale. The rating scale is not here, because I believe in a Likert scale, it's to create an alignment. Okay? So level one meets development, level two meets expectations, level three is outstanding, and then there's a DK. If you put a DK or two, you don't have to provide a comment. Okay? If you say somebody needs development, you have to provide a comment. If you say somebody's outstanding, you have to provide a comment, foreseeing an articulation by the board about the process. Now, so I put some directions, you know, they're, they're pretty standard, blue, I use blue because there's a couple of things that when we put this together, boards of education have difficulty trying to tie the job description and goals under evaluation. This state superintendent's work team developed some ideas, and those are state indicators. So like, let's go to the first, but let's go to the second, it'd be page three of fifteen. The goal, the standard is, the administrator leads by facilitating the development, articulation, implementation, and stewardship of a vision of learning that is shared by the school community. Wisconsin superintendent will have knowledge about and demonstrate skill abilities to, now, the state indicators, use a collaborative process for developing and implementing vision for student achievement, communicate and takes action to achieve the district vision, facilitate engagement activities to promote increased student achievement in diverse school community, develop plans to monitor program development and implementation to achieve district goals, communicate effectively to stakeholders regarding progress with school improvement planning goals. I can tell you, not many people have those red items in their job description. Not saying it's necessary, that's supposed to give you ideas as to where you can go back to the job description and find out what elements in the job description might relate to where this goal is. Now, it's critical not to say that if you think it should be in goal two rather than goals three, it's critical that you agree as a board. Okay? And the issue is that if some board members are saying that job description is really reflected in a different standard, and some other board members are saying it's in another standard, you're not going to be in a vision to provide a common direction as to an improvement goal. Now.
Where did you say the objectives and that came from?
There was a state superintendent work team that put together. There was a state superintendent work team that put together some ideas and indicators. And that group has been, you know, disbanded. And there was, and I'm supposed to represent the W A S B on the next superintendent evaluation for effectiveness model, but that has been delayed. That was supposed to start this fall. The work team's not going to get together until possibly the fall of two thousand and fourteen. So there won't be a superintendent evaluation before that. I'll say before sixteen or seventeen. And it'll probably be a pilot group that'll hold from there. Now, the reason I'm identifying that is, if you remember correctly, according to statute, you're supposed to do a superintendent evaluation. So, you need to agree as a group. And now, I guess I'm going to try and close this down to, I try and identify that if a board member has this evaluation, if they can put the job description under each of these goals, you can prepare yourself for the informal discussion that would occur. And here's some of the questions you may want to have as an informal discussion. How's the district operating at this time? And now, to answer that question, you should reflect back and see, does anybody have any comments with respect to any of these goals? And if you also read this in more detail, if you have a specific leadership goal, the goal should be able to fall under one of the leadership standards, and you could evaluate it at the appropriate time. Some school districts will say, we have social studies reports presented as the performance of that curriculum in September. Therefore, you wouldn't look to evaluate that until that particular quarter. Have you heard about any issues or concerns of the community that we should be concerned about as a school administration, school district, or school board? Is there anything that you know will surface in the community or school district that we need to prepare for the future? And the last, does anyone have any specific concerns about the school district direction at this point in time? That item in blue is probably the most important. And as a school board president once sent where I was working to the rest of the board, if something happened, and we had a quarterly evaluation, January, February, or March, we did this in April, and you had a concern that you didn't raise that actually occurred in that first quarter, it's done, it's over. It's your job in a continuous improvement to start talking about these things so we can stay on the same page. And that's why, as, you know, it's kind of uncomfortable to every quarter come into a situation with seven people and say, how's it going? But when a trust factor comes together, it all of a sudden actually can be confidence building. Because when you come out of that and nobody raises any concerns, or a concern is raised and the board talks about it, and they find out that's not the position of the majority, or there's been a majority change, the board will say, yes, that's different than where we were a quarter ago. That becomes supportive in continuous improvement. And I have to say, the toughest part is for the school board president or the person that's facilitating this to get everybody to speak up. And here's where the homework takes place. And this is the hard part. None of this information, it's in dialogue fashion. So you come to the board meeting and you've got your form. Let's not share it with anybody. You make comments, and you have this dialogue. And so by the time you get to the end of the year, your comments should be reflective as to whether people agreed with you or disagreed, or how they're going to move forward so that you can see where you were. And so this becomes incumbent upon the board president with the support of the majority of the board, to stay focused. And this is the hardest part. Now, my comment at this point is, is going to be hard to take, and it's not soapbox, but it's hard to take as a board. First thing that I hear back from boards is, this takes a lot of time. And, you know, it's asking a lot of us. And my response is, if you think that's difficult for you to do for one employee, think of what it is for the administrators to do to the employees in the district because you're expecting this type of evaluation to take place with staff. So, when you come back to the concept about talking about roles and when you're asking for information or you're expecting trust and how you build trust and what information you need to deal with to make your decisions, you have to think about the role, and that's why it ties back to the job description, as to whether you're tying people up in miniscule tasks that are taking away from the organizational leadership and professional development of the teachers who are working with the students. So that's a, that's a real tough issue. Now, any questions to this point? Okay, then let's go on to summary. Five dysfunctions of a team. You do not admit weaknesses and mistakes. You will not ask for help. You do not give one another the benefit of the doubt before arriving at a negative conclusion. You do not appreciate and tap into another's skills and experiences. You will not offer and accept apologies without hesitation. There's the source. Now, these are the things that have been reported by a school administrator in April of two thousand and thirteen as the five ways to unknowingly undermine school board. Superintendent doesn't have enough command of the school district finances. Not letting a board member or a board know immediately about bad news. Spending too much time addressing requests of individual board members. Criticizing the board of individual members, either in public or discussion with others. Not making clear, well- reasoned, or fully researched recommendations to them. Any questions? All right, I'm scheduled. So you, you went through quarterly, some form of evaluation quarterly.
Yes.
Personally.
Yes.
All of the stuff you felt was an improving situation or a?
Yes, it was, it was, it was improving, but it was improving because of the informal evaluations. But I want to explain to you, Ruth, that the quarterly evaluation takes place with the leader sitting in a room. And the board president asking, how are things going in the district? Does anybody have any concerns or questions? And people speak at that time. And then the board president facilitates the question, does anybody else have any perspective on that? And then may ask, then ask the superintendent to respond as to why the decision was made or things like that. It helps in two areas. It, it helps if an issue is raised about a concern or an issue that's occurring at, say, a elementary school, in the finance department facilities. It helps get a consensus with everyone. As, and then the leader, the superintendent or district administrator has an opportunity to determine if there needs to be some discussion with that administrator or information.
So it's a dialogue between the board and the administrator.
Right. It is not something, informal evaluations quarterly are not done without the superintendent president. It's really an opportunity for you all to get on the same page. Because if you're talking about continuous improvement, you're not going to have continuous improvement if you're not on the same page. And I need, and I, and I, I mean, I don't keep pointing back at that, but that is, that is an opportunity for you to understand that at this point, that may be the only issue you have to deal with. But if it's not the only issue you have to deal with, you've got to somehow figure out how you're going to get four board members in the same position with respect to that. And you're not, it's not uncommon. I mean, I get a list, sometimes four pages with board members, and it's really kind of eye-opening. Because then, the next thing that I would ask is, keeping the district together. I would start asking, what are the parts of that? When could I really evaluate those? You can't evaluate each of them at the same time. And what are we saying by keeping us together? Are we saying we're losing too many students to open enrollment? Are we failing in referendums? Are we finances that are an issue with respect to state support, lack of state support, our ability to make decisions? That's the kind of stuff that you need to have some dialogue about. Is it, is it comforting? No. But what it does do is it gets the board to come together with unanimity about the evaluation. And now I'm going to, now I'm going to come back to the idea that when you do the written evaluation, okay? You actually have individually completed it. You come to a board meeting. It should be a separate board meeting. And you should go around the table and you should try and find out what were the comments made and can we come together with a consensus comment? When that's done, that's what's shared with the leader. Because if you're, if you've got misdirecting comments, like identified too much or not enough information, you haven't said anything. And you haven't satisfied yourselves. And that's, so, the purpose is to get an alignment and a focus. And that camera at the beginning was to show you, you got focused together. And that focus starts with the board, goes to the leadership staff, and then to the system.
You know, that's, the quarterly meetings, and it's more for the keeping the open communication, the dialogue.
Right.
Among everybody, so everybody knows where they're at.
Right. Because I think it's very frustrating, and that's where I learned this. It was very frustrating for somebody elected to the board. They have some concerns about an issue. And the board keeps saying, well, we'll talk about that when we deal with superintendent evaluation in December. And the person's energy, resentment keeps building. And you could have had that conversation in July and found out that the board told the superintendent to do that. And then the issue isn't with the new board member or the superintendent. The issue is the new board member in the board. And that's, that's, if you're going to work together and build on the concept of trust, you've got to go back to the idea, trust is built on communication. And, and that doesn't mean you have to like the communication. I want to underline that. You don't have to like the communication, but you have to understand, and you have to start to deal with it.
Yes.
One of the questions that you have listed for an informal assessment is, have you heard about any issues or concerns in the community that we should be concerned about?
Right.
The school administration?
Yes.
How would you suggest that we gather that information?
I suggest that you just listen and wait for people that talk to you. And just because you get, I try, I try to also say this, just because you get one telephone call doesn't mean that the six hundred people that didn't call you agree with that one telephone call. All it tells you is, one person was concerned enough to call you. Now, it's for you to try and find out, either by asking your administrative staff, is there any merit to that concern? What are the issues? What is anybody else hearing? A superintendent can start to check, can see if there's anything else that's occurring. But when I said, you have to evaluate the data, data is just data. You have to determine whether it's good data or bad data, and whether the person has all the facts or not. And if I had more time, I'd be talking about, what do you do when a person calls you as a board member? Do you, if you, if you were trying to build trust, you know, I'd go into a, a pretty lengthy maybe exercise to say, okay, John Q. Citizen calls you and says that their daughter, Amy, was inappropriately graded on a test. Now, how would you respond to that as a board member? And, you know, the, the answer I'd be looking for is you'd be saying, did you go to the teacher? Did you go to the principal? And then as a board member, I'd be saying, you should call the superintendent and say you had this call. Maybe tell the board member to get back to you if nobody can, tell that citizen to get back to you. And the superintendent then will work with the administrative staff, and you stay out of that. It, it's, you, you set yourself up as a board member if you say, I will find out and get back to you. You will start to be used as a pawn in a chess game. And that's, that's not where you need to be if you're trying to make objective decisions in student discipline issues or in staff evaluation of performance or job expectations. And that's, that's really tough. Because I'll tell you, you, you wanted to be on the school board because you wanted to help, and you wanted to help people. But the problem is, you, the best help you can give is by getting the system to work, not for you to try and tinker with the system. That's a tough issue. That's, that's a big difference. Any other questions? We're going to beat this computer yet? Resources. Becoming a better school board member is available through the N S B A. You also can get it through the W A S B. Parliamentary Procedure Book is available through the W A S B Office. Key work with school boards. That's probably, there's a school board assessment that's offered by School Perception in conjunction with W A S B. Gives you an opportunity to electronically evaluate your perceptions. Then you can use somebody from the W A S B if you want to facilitate it. And it correlates to the parts of the key work with school boards. That's the annual board process review. We have a coaching program. We indicate that as boards change, as leadership changes, as issues change, or there's philosophical issues you want to deal with, sometimes the coaching program is good. You've used your organizational services. I'm a consultant, see if this, so you can reach me if you have any questions. Good luck. And thank you very much. You're great values.
Do we have any more future meeting dates? We set up?
I'll write it down.
Policy.
It'll be.
So, but I'll, yeah, I talked for today, so.
Okay.
Please, have any other questions?
It has to be in March, though.
We've got a meeting March tenth, March twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth is spring break, so we're going on the thirty-first.
Oh, yeah. What's, uh, everybody's playing right now? Thirty-first? I see smiles saying thirty-first. Okay. Did we set it up for the thirty-first?
I'm counting it.
Okay. Well, stuff that. I guess I'm seeing a motion to adjourn.
The mood.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.